Okay, we'll call a meeting in order with everyone please. Join the other public.
I'd like to introduce the two little legs of the United States of America and two of which stands one nation under God in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go any further this morning, I welcome everyone, but we've got a new policy that we're starting today and I would like to read it. And what it is is guidelines for online meeting participants for those of you that are online. To begin with, we would like you to identify yourself, whether you plan to speak or not, you should identify yourself in the attendee pane using your real first and last name. No initials or my iPad. Keep your microphone muted. You must mute your microphone when not speaking. Speak only when recognized. You must speak only when recognized by the chair. For purposes of taking meeting minutes, all persons addressing the board are required to identify themselves using their first and last name and give their full address each time they speak. Use the raise hand button. It is easier to manage discussions when participants use the raise hand button. Use the raise hand button when you want to speak and wait for the chairman to recognize you and ask you to unmute. And we would also like you to turn on your camera. You should use your camera. Cameras are especially important to facilitate visual communication and engagement. Last is recording of meetings allowed. South Dakota Code of Law 12511 requires that any person recording a meeting through audio or video technology must make that fact obvious. So do so in a reasonable manner and not be disruptive.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, I think Jeff says we're muted. My settings don't show that we are muted, so I don't know. I'm going to run over there.
You're muted.
Jeff, can you hear us?
So everybody get some listen to that again?
In here anyway.
Yeah. I don't know. You got the team, Mr. Chairman, around and I'll run over to Dr. and see. I don't know what to do.
Okay. First order of business will be to approve the agenda. Is there any additions, Bruce?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would just point out that at eight fifteen, you were scheduled to consider change order number seven for the Public Safety Services Center project, but that would also coincide with that, with there's been a bill that's submitted as well. So if you would include approval of change order number seven as part of your approval of that bill, otherwise it will be a change.
Okay, with any other kind of approvals then?
Second.
Okay, motion in a second for approval. All those with favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
The opposed motion carried. We have a complex today.
Not here.
Okay. We need to approve our regular meeting minutes and board of adjustment minutes from June twenty-third.
So move approval. Second.
Okay, motion in a second for approval. All those with favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Bills. I, my questions have been answered.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Motion to pay the bills, including change order number seven.
Included that motion, Brandon is the chairman of the office, has assigned change order?
Yes.
Second. Okay, motion for approval. All those with favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Brandon, do you have any personnel for?
Nothing. Can I have the signed change order?
We also need to appoint a group for, for the interviews for the veteran service officer. I would like to participate. Might, I don't know, I would suggest maybe, maybe the full board, I don't know.
If you do that, then it gets a little difficult. We'd have to have a meeting, like have an agenda and have an executive session. In the past, you've appointed a committee that then reports back to the founding commission. I know, for example, Jesse, the beat curfew, so was interested in participating and he would also maybe offer that his district representative person would also be available to help that interview if he wanted to as well.
Somebody else wants to.
Make a motion to appoint Mr. Altke, Mr. Ewing, Mr. Tisdale. I always forget Jesse's last name.
Sorry.
There you go. And additionally slash optionally, the, who calls it?
Okay.
To the board, the interview board.
Okay, wait a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those with favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Paul, a question with the chairs. You have three applications. There was no deadline or to close it. When did you want to begin the interviews? Anytime in particular, or you want to think about it and get back to me?
Well, no, we probably should discuss something. I need to be done with it, right, Rick?
I would think so.
I'm tied up next week, so what's the following week?
Next week, you, you meet, you meet again on the twenty-second of July. I don't know, but that theoretically would be a longer meeting depending on how long your budget discussions go.
Maybe the day before, the day after. The day before would work good for me.
Okay. So twenty-first.
Twenty-first here in this room, like nine o'clock?
That'd be fine. That work for you, sir? What are you looking at? Jesse's not in here.
Okay.
I'll try to get that set. Schedule about half an hour between interviews?
Yeah. Any travel requests?
I have none, Chairman.
Honor, judge, count, treasure, Brenda.
Alrighty. This is as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Total amount of deposits in the bank is twenty-five million, nine hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. Included in that balance is the bank balance of twenty-four million, eight hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty cents. Money market, one million, ninety-three thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. Total amount of actual cash is one thousand, three hundred and fifty. Total amount of checks and drafts in treasurer's possession out of three days is eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. And then the total amount of cash in treasurer's possession is eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-four cents. Petty cash, two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, for a total of twenty-six million, forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty-two cents.
Move approval on that question. Honor's accountants, treasure.
Second. Okay, in a second, all those with favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right, supplemental budget transfer, Brenda.
This here is the, this is for the sheriff's office? The sheriff's office, they had some damage to their Ford transit vehicle and this is the payment of five thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and forty-two cents. I just paid a motion authorizing me to supplement it into the sheriff's travel budget for the repairs.
So move second. Okay, motion in a second for approval. All those with favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. That's the man, Lewis.
Period.
Oh. Okay, county convention registration, eighth and ninth of September.
I'll get the chairman first announcement of that, so you can check your calendars. I don't have the registration online, it's not there yet, so I have other codes of gender. I don't know any more details other than what is presented there.
Follow to go forward. It is something to keep on top of your mind. Comprehensive property tax force, Rapid City.
I was just going to bring this to your attention, Mr. Chairman. Indeed, on Thursday, July seventeenth, legislature, the members of the committee are set to have that task force meeting regarding property taxes. I think Commissioner Jennings is planning to testify. They have now issued details about where it's at. It's at the Bat Ballroom at the School of Mines and starts at nine o'clock. Some of the participants include Senator Dibert and also Representative Orenbach in Lawrence County. If anybody's interested, with more than three of you, five or ten, please let me know and I'll give a notice of court.
We'll be able to make it. All right. Eight fifteen. Sheriff Dean's not here, Mr. Johnson, you?
Nothing to report today.
Nothing at all, huh? Life's good?
Pretty good.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Johnson? Nick, you only run in the mud one of these days.
Next time. Boy, Brian will be back next time, so.
All right, thank you, thanks. Well, we tried to do our public hearing yet. It's scheduled for eight twenty-five.
Mr. Chairman, Paul, can we do your hike smart?
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just to reduce it to your package, proposed press release.
Yep.
Regarding hiking and smart and South Dakota and Paul.
You have the floor, Paul.
This was presented, put together actually by someone in Pennington County and we've all got the same problem. We got a lot of hikers, we got a lot of ATV'ers, we got a lot of people that, well, for instance, in June alone, we went to Devil's Bathtub five times. And it's just getting more crowded, more crowded. This is just something that, between the five counties, I mean, that we're hoping to put in paper posted places, so people trying to get awareness, what they should do. People hike up the Devil's Bathtub in flip flops and shorts and, like I, I've always said, the majority of them get clear to the top and break their ankle and our search and rescue and Spearfish go together because it takes so many personnel to carry them out. Most of the time, they're over three hundred pounds, so it's quite a job, takes a lot of manpower. For instance, the last search we went on was all night, Friday night and half a day on Saturday. Luckily, unfortunately, the person came out in good shape, but it can turn bad quick. So this is just, just an awareness.
We need the support of the motion, Bruce.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I don't have any, it's a good idea. Need to support.
Second.
Okay, with motion in a second to support. All those with favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. There wouldn't be a chance.
Oh, three hundred pounds, huh? Want to start with John, Dave? He's pretty quick.
Well, I don't really have much either, so I just have some project updates. I have no approach permits nor do I have any utility permits. I have a couple of approach permits pending, but I'm waiting for more information, so alls I have is some project reports and we are currently, we are, this week could be finished up with our, just our routine chloride treatments of the, of the roads. It's going pretty well. We did have a lot of delay from rain. We were not able to work yesterday either on that, so, but we do plan on being done with the majority of that by the end of the week. We also got that Roughlock Falls road resurfaced and the chloride treatment done to that. We are still waiting on our, our, the check from the Gamefish and Parks. We haven't got payment. I did receive a phone call from them. We did slightly go over the eighty-five thousand dollar estimate, so they're willing or pending to pay the, the difference. They, it's going to require probably another agreement or an amendment to the agreement, so we're waiting to see if that, that plays out.
What roads do you have left complete or mag water?
Uh, right now, we're up in the, the, the hills right now. We're, we're down in the Brownsville area, we're the Galena area, Custer Crossing. After that, it'll be all the roads that we just gravel, you know, everything that we're planning graveling for the remainder of the year, which would be kind of in that Elk Creek and Big Lead area. Those will get a chloride treatment when we're done graveling them. Our paving project started on the Nemo Road. They milled that, it's completely milled. Now they're, the actual paving should start this week is, was the plan. I think they were planning on starting yesterday, but then it got pretty wet out there, so that, that will also, if everything goes as, you know, as planned there, that'll be done by the rally. They also started on all of our crack ceiling projects. They, they started down there on the Whitewood Service Road. They got to move over to the, to the Spearfish area after that. I'm not sure where they're, I haven't talked to anybody yet this week about that, so. We did receive our, our Surface Transportation Block Grant money from the state in the amount of three hundred and sixty-three thousand, six dollars and fifty-six cents. We also got a check for seventeen thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars for some restitution for the guard rail. Thanks, Bruce, for that. He kind of spearheaded getting that pushed through the restitution department, so. Everything else is going pretty well. Let's say we're going to be starting our graveling here again. We, we've got a couple of roads already gravelled, but we still have the remainder of, on our list to do, which is about five roads. So everything's going well.
Who's your plan?
Hill Street. The last word I got from Hill Street, there, there was some, they ran into some problems, so.
What did he miss?
They, I hate to say I told them so, but I told them so. I, I thought two weeks was a little quick for their, they were pretty optimistic about having that done in their timeframe, so.
Have you, are you aware of the gravel trucks coming out of Wyoming pit coming on, on a Homestead Road?
No.
They've changed, changed that, that intersection where it comes out. The gravel pit in Wyoming used to come out and there's a big sweeping curve.
Yep.
And then they went out and ended up at, at Beulah. Well, now they've done it, there's a sweeping curve going, coming this way and they're coming into.
I was not aware of that. There is a lot of issues out on I-90 in Wyoming where they don't let a lot of trucks come that way. They got, they had some closure, there are some narrow lanes. They're sending a lot of people down the West Fourteen, but with that bridge and the condition that bridge, we've kind of put a stop to that, so my guess is that they're probably coming in on Homestead now, so.
Well, I saw one and it was, it looked like, I think it was a side dump, so it wasn't like it didn't have the big train, but.
Sure.
But when you, you go across that Cadillac Garden in Wyoming and you're surprised by a full gravel truck there.
Yeah, it's pretty narrow.
Fifty miles an hour.
Their roads are very.
It wakes you up.
They use the red yellow roads a lot.
I just never seen until this year where they actually widened out that curve coming out of that pit to.
Right, yeah, it was always pretty tight.
Come to the east.
I, I have not been out there for quite some time.
They working on the overpass by Beulah?
Yeah, that and the actual, on the interstate itself, that may be, yeah.
But it. That different weight in the two states causes us some grief on some of our.
It does. We get a lot of traffic on West Fourteen because the interstate in Wyoming has a lot of limitations there.
Anything else for John, gentleman?
There were some people that were trying to change the weight limit to ninety-one thousand instead of eighty. Did they get anything done on that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Thank you, guys. Enjoy the rest of your day.
You as well. We're going to take five minutes right till we get to our eight twenty-five public hearing.
I'm going to need a second for a couple of.
Should be.
Okay, we'll call a meeting back to order. It is eight twenty-five. This has been the place for a public hearing on resolution for supplemental budget. Brenda, we'll let you go ahead and present that and then we'll have the hearing.
All right, this is the time and place for supplemental budget for emergency management fund for emergency management search and rescue. They received a five hundred dollar donation for the Mickelson Trail and also a thousand dollar donation from recreational springs. They did a fundraiser and gave the money to them and they're just asking to supplement this back into search and rescue budget so they can use it for Christmas party.
Yep, so we'll move up here. So like you said, we had the Mickelson Trail and then recreational springs put on a fundraiser this year and a number of local businesses actually participated in that, which was, which was nice, like Spearfish Canyon Lodge and Trailshead Lodge. They did like a mini golf event where people traveled around to the different businesses and then some money was raised for for search and rescue, which was really nice, so. So, but that was organized by Rex Springs. We, we interface with them a lot in the winter as they have a lot of snowmobile tourism out at their, at their spot there. So what we were thinking is we'll be using that to make a purchase probably for some like personal protective equipment that gets used in the winter months or, or something related to the snowmobile season that we can kind of say like, thank you guys for the donation. Here's, you know, how we'll be giving back to the community, helping you guys out with, with that equipment, so. So that's the plan for that. Yeah, any, any questions about that or?
No, well, it's a public hearing, so we'll open it up to the public and did you have something to add, Brenda?
Oh, yeah, I could have. My name is Joe Lillo. I'm a volunteer with Lawrence County Search and Rescue.
Okay, we'll open it up for a public hearing. If there's anyone online or in the body of the room that would like to speak for or against this, you may at this time, we would ask that you would stand and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak to this? Is there anyone online that would like to speak to this? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and offer to the board.
Motion approved.
Second. Okay, motion is second for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, Brenda, get you down a renewal. A malt beverage?
Yes. Alrighty, so this here is a renewal for the Wildwood Fields campground and resort in three eighty-five. Just standard renewal. This had, weren't able to get ahold of him to get him to bring it in. He did not get the application when we mailed it out, so that's why it's a little late, but.
Royal Housekeeping.
Yep, definitely so.
Okay, it is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the body of the room or online that would like to speak to this? If so, you would please state your name and address for the record. Anyone in the body of the room? Or online? Seeing none, we'll close the, close the hearing and offer to the board.
Motion approved.
Sorry, go.
Okay, and a second for approval. All those who agree with the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, Brenda, we got, that's it, isn't it?
Yep.
Martezin is gonna try to come early and I left a message for Lexi to invite her early. Amber's down here to do maybe some finding and zoning. We can do most of it.
Or the normal, is anybody here?
Ryan Waterman's coming for his.
Okay, that'd be the only one. Last time he just got online. But we could probably do the flats if you wanted to.
Can you just take a break for a second while we transition?
Yeah.
Well, I'll be the mic going up now.
Call back to order. And our first one is twenty twenty-five thirty-eight preliminary plat and final plat. Amber, you want to present?
Yep, this is subdivision off of Kirk City Road. They had divided this down the frontage lots quite a few years ago now, and they had left a flagship to allow access in. And there's an existing house and garage on this one right, or existing foundation, not house, the foundation.
Is it off Kirk City Road?
It's off Kirk City Road.
Yeah, it kinda looks like that same one.
I don't know.
Looks like a year ago.
Nope, this is, I don't think this is that one.
It's closed.
It's closed, but it's not that one. And then they're just wanting to subdivide sixteen acres and six point nine seven acres for a family member. And then they're gonna go in and actually build on the foundation. They, they haven't done anything besides a foundation. This would be the last allowable lot in that like subdivision. There isn't, there wouldn't be any acres left after this for, for the number of lots. Yep.
Of course.
Yep.
Says here, fire plan in process.
It actually got done. We got it later.
Done?
Yep, so the, their fire plan and then they would like to, obviously like we've done in the past is when the work, when the house gets built, they'll have to do some work like right around the house, but we don't have the house yet, obviously.
Chairman? Please your planning.
Oh, where's the access to lot six B R dash two?
There's an easement.
Was that?
Yeah.
There's an easement across there. You look on the second page, there's.
I'm looking at the preliminary plat. I don't see an access easement anywhere on my copy that's on, on the drive.
We did, and I don't, we found it.
Is it right here?
Yeah, I'm looking at it on the drive. The preliminary plat, there's.
Cause I know she, they talked about it.
What are you looking for? The access?
The access.
Isn't that right in that small drawing or?
There's two lots. They're cutting that into two pieces and there's no, the plat does not show any, any access to the second lot.
They could drive on the one that's showing there and then go wherever they want.
That's not legal access.
It's not on the, I'll, I know they talked about it. I don't see down here. It's gonna come off where that driveway, I know where it is.
Which is fine. It's not on the plat, so I'm not gonna do it until I see where it goes on the plat.
The one that we saw, it's coming right off here.
Okay.
They're gonna share that.
What about setback then for the, for the septic system?
We don't have a setback from the driveway in the septic system.
Okay.
There is no setback.
Okay.
I'll be there. You showed it to us the other days.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah.
I know.
Like, we can just have them reprint. That would be fine, cause I know it's there. It's coming off that.
They're, they're using the existing driveway?
They're gonna share that driveway all the way in.
How big is that access going to be?
It can be up to four feet.
It can be, but what is it? Is it twenty foot? Is it twenty-five feet?
I think it was twenty.
I vote to deny this plat until I get the seaman. If you don't know what it is, then I don't know what it is. I can't vote for it.
Excuse me, hello.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, this is, my name is Kelly Townsend. I'm here with my husband Dean Townsend. We are the original, the owners of the entire, and wanting to have this subdivided for my brother. The, we have an easement for the driveway and my brother will access it by continuing straight forward. Where that driveway curd- curves up, he'll go straight through. And we are willing to do what we need to do to make sure that's considered a legal access.
I think it's just the, usually, and I know I saw something for Brad that showed how wide is the easement all the way back, and then you just show that on the plat, but it's not on there.
Okay.
So I don't know what your easement agreement is with, with the neighbor or with the new lot owner.
Yeah, he's got, the existing driveway will be access to the lots, but there's no dimension. There's no anything on there, which that's not legally binding.
Do you remember, was it a twenty foot easement?
I, what was it there?
I believe so.
Yes.
I, I'm pretty sure, and I think he went up and recorded it afterwards. His dad was at the, River was at the.
Got their limited.
So I, I guess I would ask if you guys are comfortable with it to not deny it, cause I know it's there and just, we can make sure that they reprint it and add the easement document to it.
Was that in the?
Yeah. I'm pretty certain it was twenty feet.
Take it until the time hits, I'd say nine fifteen, we're supposed to do this and see if Brad shows up.
Yeah, I don't know. Well, I think either way, it's gonna have to go on the plat though, is what.
It will, absolutely.
I mean, it's gotta show on there. Which I'm fine with. We've done it before where you just had me reprint and add the easement on it.
I'll just see if there were other, other documents with this.
That would be reflective, but we'll make some motion. Does it include that?
Right now you have a motion to deny.
A motion in a second.
Oh, okay. Any further discussion? All those, we're gonna do a roll call. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Name.
Say.
Aye.
Say again.
I still gotta say aye.
Name.
Okay, so there can be two, two?
So according to S D C L seven dash eight dash eighteen, it asks automatically gets continued till the next meeting.
Can we continue it till later on in the meeting if we get clarification from the?
Can.
And be brought back up by the, by the, technically are we considered the prevailing party or is there a prevailing party in this instance?
I would get too bogged down in that. I think, yeah, if you can do that.
So Kelly, if you can have Brad or somebody email me the actual width of that easement or the document that you have in place, they will re, they will look at this again today if you can get that to me. So we need to know what the easement's going to look like and where it's going to be located.
Okay, I'll call him right now.
Okay, that sounds good. And he can email it to me or if needed, he can call my cell phone and, and I can pick up.
Okay, and I'm, I apologize. What's your name? So I didn't know.
Amber.
Amber, okay, I'll call him right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's go on to the twenty twenty-five dash thirty-nine preliminary and final of Wilson Rattle and Mary Living Trust.
This one was, this one's just combining two lots, so it'll be, I think it was thirty-six and thirty-seven, and that would be thirty-seven, eight, one. And there is a house, basically that sits right in the middle of the lot, so they're just combining them for yard space.
Yeah, they just walked a lot beside them and that's what I'm looking at here. Second.
Okay, the motion to, you know, subject to approve the preliminary and the final plat. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, Amber, we got twenty-five forty-two.
Yep, and this one is just Dancing Sky addition, two lots up there, and then they're extending the road, the public right of way through it. And this is the one, I had talked to you guys about, this, this big tract here is where the gravel pit sits. So they just wanted to do kind of an ending there, cause it goes into the gravel pit. If they, if there would ever be, you can cross the gravel pit and come out on the side if you need to do it. They just wanted a better way so people didn't have to go down in the gravel pit and turn around and come back out. And then it keeps going up this way. These are all on existing access.
Okay. Is it two and a half and a final?
Yeah.
What is? Hold on. Oh, there we go. I'm just trying to break the code on what all we're looking at there.
So you've got two lots above and then they're plating the gravel pit lot, I guess, or you would wanna call it the gravel pit, and then this is just a leftover.
The remainder of Gold Eagle M S.
Eagle, cause they take it out. There's a little chunk down here that stayed with the gravel pit.
Okay, that's what, you know.
Yep, so it's kinda just redoing those lot lines.
Motion to approve the preliminary and final plat.
Sorry, go.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the preliminary and the final. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
On the plat previous, the Wilson plat, you guys didn't approve the final.
I think you did both.
We did them both.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, I, I heard Rick say, I thought I heard him say both.
Okay.
We're finished with that. Kelly, possibly come back to this first one to end later. Chairman, Lexi and. I see that. Lexi, would you like to come forward and?
Sure.
Thank you for coming early. We're kinda running a little early here today.
That's okay. You know, it'll probably be to your benefit, cause I've only had one cup of coffee, so I might speak a little slower for you. No, no, just not quite as awake as I should be. Even though I've been up since five thirty. So I'm here today to represent on the Juvenile Justice Reinvestment Initiative Fund. So each year, we keep track of all of our youth who go through diversion and for those that successfully complete that are under the age of eighteen, we are eligible for reimbursement at a rate of up to seven hundred and fifty dollars per child. That money goes directly back to the counties and and then you guys determine where you want it to go from there. So I got all of our paperwork done. Actually, what you guys have in your packet is not the correct, correct number. I apologize. I thought my staff had everything in and turns out we're missing a couple, so. Oh, it is. Okay, okay. So we actually had a hundred and twenty-one total youth from Lawrence County who participated in our programming over this last fiscal year, and ninety-seven of them have completed, twenty-one of, or several of them have not yet completed. We only actually had three kids fail. So we're pretty excited about that. Ninety-seven percent success rate of those kids, about fifty percent of them were for substance-related offenses. That's anything from a minor to possession of a controlled substance, which is typically some type of marijuana derivative. And we had of those substance offenses, forty percent of them were for some kind of a marijuana-related offense. So all I'm asking for today is that if you guys see fit to please sign this so we can send it into the state and hopefully get, reimburse the money for you guys.
Motion approved, the signature.
Second.
Okay, a motion in second for, for Brenda?
I was just wondering if you wanted to add that you would designate the funds to the Lawrence County pin port as a way to set any of the grant funds. You have done that historically in the past.
Was that in your motion?
That wouldn't have been my motion.
Yes. Okay, we have a motion, an amended.
Yes, that is. Sorry, the packet online.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Lexi, if you could send me the Excel.
The Excel spreadsheet.
If they like it from that form.
If we're ready for you are.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming early, sir.
No problem. Yep, that's just fine. So I'm Mark Tezen. I'm the closure manager for Home State in South Dakota, and I'll be giving the annual C U P reports for both Home State and Richmond Hill today. Starting with the Richmond Hill line. We have a total of two hundred and sixty-two total released acres, seventy-five remaining affected acres, most of which are used for water treatment. Unreclaimed acres is seventy-one point three seven. That's part of that seventy-five acres. Unreclaimed acres is seventy one point three seven. That's part of that seventy five acres. Sure.
Can we have a quick motion to recess?
Oh, yeah, we got a recess as sorry.
Yep.
As a sound of recess for his economy can measures and read during the S P O A.
I got one of the adjustments.
Motion in a second to do so. All those who are favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion.
No problem.
New rules.
Did you want me to start over or are we good?
No.
Okay. Total remaining affected acres of seventy five point one three, of which seventy one point three seven are used for water treatment and reclaimed affected acres of three point seven six. There were no complaints in received in twenty twenty four and no technical revisions submitted or approved in twenty twenty four. So activities, as I'm sure all of you know, we entered into an option agreement with Dakota Gold in twenty twenty one to acquire the Richmond Hill and Home State properties. There were requests to extend those options and they were extended in December. And now they have until December thirty first, twenty twenty eight to exercise one or both of those. Water management and treatment for the leach pads and ponds. Biological water treatment plant operations are used for selenium treatment. We operated the water treatment plant N R O discharging about fourteen point four four million gallons in twenty twenty four and operated the biological water treatment plant independently over the winter months to discharge another three point four one million gallons. There are, as of the March, there were about seventeen point four million gallons of water stored in the treatment ponds, and we're fairly close to that today. Leach pad effluent averaged approximately twenty six point seven gallons per minute in twenty twenty four. And they were very close to the same average as twenty twenty three. Recipitation was thirty three point nine five inches in twenty three, six point two inches in twenty twenty four. So Spruce Gulch is the reclaimed site of the waste rock disposal facility, and we do water treatment there for for pH adjustment and and A R D. And so we use pH adjustment and sodium hydroxide as needed. And this nearby South Gulch Waters pump to Spruce Gulch Treatment Pond for treatment. Monitoring activities. The twenty twenty four backfill monitoring capping system continues to indicate that the cap is functioning to and better than design expectations. And the leach cap, leach pad capping system continues to perform well, limiting infiltration. Site-wide water quality monitoring, the site water quality is generally stable or improving. Cleopatra Creek Water Quality Monitoring confirms there are no impacts from the Richmond Hill Mine. And monitoring has continued in site performance criteria. Were developed in in consultation with the D A and R and approved by the Board of Mineralism Environment to ensure continued protection of the environment during post-closure. Our plans are simply to continue water treatment and continue our monitoring activities up there for this year. That's it for Richmond Hill.
Any questions for it? None of that?
Okay.
Okay, so for the Home State Mine, our year-end employee employment for Home State and Richmond Hill combined was ten F T Es plus two part-time contract employees. And our contributions were about thirteen thousand five hundred dollars for the year. Reclamation has been completed at the Waste Rock Facilities. As of the end of twenty twenty four, we have five hundred and fifty five acres released and about eighty seven remaining acres affected. And the the reclamation is complete on all the areas and it's it's maturing nicely and should be ready for release within the next couple of years, I would. There were no complaints received in twenty twenty four and no technical revisions to the permit submitted in twenty twenty four. Activities. Same thing, same thing with the option agreement with Dakota Gold. Ends in December thirty first, twenty twenty eight, excuse me. We had some slope repairs at the East Waste Rock Facility. These are minor repairs of erosion rails. Usually these recover naturally. Occasionally we'll have one that does not, and so we had a couple, a couple of them this last year in twenty twenty four that we repaired. They were in East Ravine, Gayville Gulch and Blacktail Gulch. So basically, the ones in East Ravine, we on the five thousand bench, we went in and reslope that as far as we could reach, then hydromulched and seeded it. We used a hydro blanket, which is a product that's been used in the past by the Forest Service for post-burn treatments. And it's worked out very nicely, and we've got a nice, nice green area there that's recovered recovering very, very well. We used our normal seed mix for grasses and added birch pine and and aspen seed. Blacktail Gulch, again, another another area that we decided while we were there, we'd go ahead and do some repairs on that one. And same thing, we had very, very good results out of that. Twenty twenty four monitoring continues to show the surface water around the Home State Mine remains excellent and meets all water quality standards. Deadwood Creek Monitoring, the Blacktail Water Treatment Plant treats water emanating from the toes of the saw pit in East Waste Rock Facilities. Water Treatment Plant System removes selenium and total dissolved solids prior to discharging to Deadwood Creek. And the Water Treatment Plant discharge consistently meets all of our permitted effluent limits and the water quality standards for the creek. Our in-stream selenium and T D S levels are well below the surface water quality standards and have been since the water treatment plant began in two thousand and six. For geotechnical monitoring, Home State employs multiple displacement monitoring techniques. These include survey monitoring and monuments and prisms with a robotic total station and G P S methods. We have pizometers to measure water levels in the Waste Rock Facility, make sure they're not increasing or or pressuring up. Inclinometers to measure any movements at depth, visual inspections and INSAR monitoring, which is a satellite monitoring. So our open cut prisms and survey monuments. The baseline current survey is performed in South Dakota State plane coordinates using robotic total station instruments. And new new trend line movements were developed in twenty twenty three and and readings indicate no significant monitoring from prior monitoring. Geotechnical monitoring of the open cut east block. This is the area that failed a number of years ago. And this area is contained within the pit boundary on Home State Controlled Property. Measures don't indicate any new area of instability or significant upslope enlargement. And for the remaining crest, there's no indications of any recent movements that would represent a potential for substantial slope failures.
Mark, do you care if anything happens internally in the pit? Is is your concern that the edge starts to move back and the pit gets wider?
Certainly, anything at the crest would be the biggest concern, but we do watch any kind of failures within the pit as well and to see what effects that could have on the overall pit. Usually what we see are very small bench scale type movements within the pit. We do monitor and record those and and keep an eye on it. It's it's part of the overall evaluation.
It could be difficult putting a lot to get in there and do any remedial work.
Yeah, that would in remedial work in the pit. I'm not sure, you know, if there would be a case where we would need to do that, but it would it would pose some challenges for sure. The long baseline neutrino facility excavation, disposal of rock started in May of twenty one. It was completed in May of twenty four. They were permitted for eight hundred and seventy five thousand tons of material and ended up mining about eight hundred and twenty thousand tons to get their caverns. The pile is approximately five hundred and sixty feet vertical. And the prisms in the pit on either side of the pile show that things are stable. East Waste Rock Facility Survey Monuments, again, new trend line movement rates were developed in twenty twenty three. And the new monitoring, newest monitoring shows no significant movement from prior monitoring. Pizzometers, no significant buildup of water levels in the Waste Rock Facility. Inclinometers have indicated no significant changes since previous monitoring. Visual inspections show no significant areas of instability. And the INSAR monitoring shows that the dump is behaving as expected with no significant issues. Home State Projects for twenty five, we will be replacing the Saw Pit Emergency Pond Pipeline. It's a pipeline that runs from the base of the Saw Pit Waste Rock Facility in Central City or just above Central City back up to the emergency pond that's on top. And that's that's used generally during and after huge storms like we had in twenty thirteen where we need to pump, we need to hold water for a while to get everything through the treatment plant properly. So we pump it up to an eleven million gallon pond on top of the Waste Rock Facility. And then we can gravity feed that back down and through the pipeline network back to our feed pond. And that pipeline is at the point now where it needs to be replaced, just maintenance type project. We're going to continue our water treatment agreement with the South Dakota Science and Tech Authority to treat our water at Grizzly Gulch and can continue water treatment. That's everything for that one.
Any questions for? Appreciate it.
Yeah, you bet.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mark?
Yep.
Or to recesses commission.
Motion to adjourn this board of justice and go back after the commission. Just second it. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, Terry.
Yep, give me a second.
Okay, take a two-minute break. Okay, we're back online. Ever who want to start us out, we did have the first reading and the public hearing of which we claimed at the last meeting. This is the second reading of this.
Yeah, it's it's just second reading. I don't have anything to add to it. A one to A two was the zoning request. If you remember originally, he started with rural residential. And after the planning and zoning meeting, he opted to switch it to A two. So you can do that because it's it's actually less dense than rural residential. And so that was the request, basically just A one to A two in that area. It's kind of in that board line. It does fall within the planning jurisdiction still. So even with the new mapping, it is still gonna go to Spearfish for any plating, but the change of zoning starts with us.
Okay, Mr. Disney, would you mind bringing up the G I S and showing who were neighbors of the Chines property? While you're doing that, Mr. Wardman did come on visit with me, which I appreciated. And after he left, I had a couple neighbors come up and and weren't in favor of it. And I said to both of them, I said, you should have been to one of the public hearings to, you know, at least get it all on record. They didn't get it done. But I just thought I'd bring that up.
Thank you for exposing these conversations.
Pardon?
Thank you for exposing this conversation.
Yeah.
I also talked to Mr. Wardman. He called me.
Have we seen?
To to ask if if I had any questions on on the proposal.
So it's touching A two up in the northeast corner.
Yes, touching A two here. This one and the rest of them are still A one. Trying to see. You might not let me do names.
We should have on X on.
One.
I can do, I can say names, Amber, if you need me to.
Yeah, I just, it won't let me because it's not.
So to the north is Clinktons. The east is Naimy.
Dutch. Say your name.
Oh, sorry, Ryan, Ryan Wardman, two fifty eight Evans Lane Spearfish.
Thank you.
To the east is is Deb Naimy. I believe I'm pronouncing her last name. It might be Naimy. The northeast there is Riley Fremont. He was the most recent rezone out in that area. And then to the south is Holstad. And then one, the one I know the best in the southeast corner there, I'm drawing a blank right now. But.
Cornella.
Cornella, thank you. Cornella and then Everly is to the west.
Northwest corner.
That's Everly as well.
Everly.
Yep. All set.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the rezon. We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
I will second that and I'll just add that 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 area is along the interstate, which the access is better than a lot. The general character of that area is large lot residential with, of course, a big block of with Westview, a big block of suburban residential. And I think that's probably a good way to keep that ranchette style where you can have horses and you can do that kind of thing, but not go into the the high density stuff. So I think it's pretty appropriate for for that particular area.
Mr. Chair, if I've I've mentioned this to some. Eric Neese was sending up paperwork to be reviewed for, and I don't know if this makes a difference to anybody or not, but for a road district as well along that shared road there. So there will be a public access that's privately funded to be maintained there. The myself and the neighbors are all working on that in that area. Handful of us are, so that will be coming. I don't know. I don't know the process for that exactly, but Eric, I know knows it very well.
Any further discussion? Commissioner sleep?
Well, I don't live right next to it, but we have land just not very far away from there. And I think it should be left in agriculture and that has been in agriculture in our family for a hundred and forty one years there. I would just soon see that area left in agriculture.
Any further discussion from the board?
Well, we came up with A two as a buffer to write down from high density to A two to agriculture, and I think it's a good spot for that.
And I disagree with you there.
I don't think. Okay. We do have a motion in a second for approval. We're gonna do a roll call vote on this. All those in favor of that approval motion will say aye.
Stand.
Aye.
Sleep.
No.
Not again?
Aye.
You win.
Nay. So this will be
Go to the next meeting.
Brought up again at the next meeting because we're short a person.
S D C L eight eighteen. Eight eighteen, yeah, says it has to be deferred until the next meeting when the full commission should be here.
Okay.
Seven eighteen.
So we're being signed second, right? Is that right? July twenty second, and you will have a scheduled time, right, Bruce? We won't know. I'll let you know.
Okay.
It just gets rescheduled until Eric.
Seven eighteen, right?
Seven eight eighteen.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Brenda, we can't do your next hearing yet.
I do have an answer on that plat if it's one or no.
Well, you do. Okay, let's let's take care of that. Well, you do, okay, let's, let's take care of that.
So Brad texting in, I don't know, Kelly is back on. Brad emailed me, sorry, and said, the existing plat submission to the county for the Kelly Townsend plat does not have a current access easement for the newly created six VR two. There was an original plat, two thousand eight, five, one, six, four, that showed a forty foot wide access and utility easement. It was set to be vacated this plat, and then we are installing a twenty foot wide access and utility easement at the location of the current gravel driveway. If business conditionally approved with that access added, we will reprint the Mylar with legal access to the new law across six VR one to lot six VR two. So they want to replace the forty foot down to a twenty foot because when we looked at the original plat, there was an original easement when it was the big lot.
Well, it sounds like there's an existing plat out there that he's not referring to. Is that correct?
Yes, because they were taking it off, so he didn't put it on there.
So did that go through planning and zoning to get vacated?
It doesn't have to.
So we, we can just vacate plaits without notice?
They're not vacating a plat.
Didn't you say there was an existing plat?
There's an existing plat that's still there. This is a replat. The forty foot access goes away, they're replacing it for twenty.
Does it reference that replat? Does the legal description reference the plat, the original, the plat, whatever plat is currently in place?
There's a legal description?
Okay, there is a plat in existence that shows two lots there. Is that correct?
No, there's not. It's one lot which has a forty foot access to one lot. Now they're taking two lots.
To the, well, that's the
The easement will go all the way to the new lot. Six VR two?
Yep. Is it, is it forty foot or twenty foot?
They're going to twenty feet, all the way to the lot.
I will make a motion to approve the preliminary only after that document is filed and it is shown on the preliminary plat.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. There is one understand. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
And then I will approve the preliminary once the conditions of the final have been met and the fire plan is done. Or we hold the building permit until the plan is done, or something else. There's got to be something. No, I said, once the conditions of the preliminary plat have been met.
I'll second it for further discussion. Any further discussion?
Chairman, this is Kelly Townsend.
Fire plan should be done before the approval is done. They should have all that stuff done before. I know it says they don't have to, but they should have a fire plan done before the rest of us approve.
Chairman, this is Kelly Townsend, twelve zero three Cook City Road. The fire, according to the fire distribution plan for replating is complete. There's just a couple of trees be prior to building that we have to remove before we can get a building permit.
And I'll do that, I'll just put before the issuance of the
So if you look at the staff recommendation, it says staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat is submitted. You guys have changed that with adding the access, which is fine. Staff recommends approval of the final plat as well, citing that the mitigation process will be taken care of as the site for the building repairs, which we have done in the past.
Okay, I will add that terminology in addition to the condition, yes. I will approve the final plat once the conditions of the preliminary plat have been met. And following the additional recommendation of the planning and zoning board, or the planning of staff. Of staff.
I seconded it, so. Further discussion? Seeing then, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Seven? We still got time. Gentlemen, from Black Hills Power here, if you want to come forward, gentlemen. And we've got one more public hearing at nine thirty, but we've got a little over fifteen minutes.
Okay.
Let the guys get started.
That'll work.
If you can introduce yourselves and any address for the record?
Hey, my name is Michael Pogony. I'm the General Manager of Electric Operations for Black Hills Energy in Rapid City.
Thank you.
And with me, John Kaiser. John is our Community Affairs Manager for Black Hills, also from Rapid.
You have the floor, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to try to get it online here.
All right. So I'd just like to say thank you for the commission and the public to have the opportunity to speak about our wildfire prevention efforts. You know, we, we've been on this journey for a number of years. The, the topic we're going to talk about today is a little bit newer, but Black Hills has been, you know, serving the communities on the Black Hills for over a hundred and forty years with power. You know, growing up here, been a, you know, a customer of Black Hills, we take serving customers very seriously. And wildfire is one of those areas and topics that is very impactful to communities that we serve. And so I just wanted to take a few minutes of your time to kind of walk through some of the things that we're doing. And then also introduce the concept that's, that's called the Public Safety Power Shut Off, which is the proactive de-energization of lines in the event that the environmental conditions are too severe to maintain our system. With that, I did want to take one moment before we go to the next slide and just kind of supplement some of the things, you know, we, obviously reliability is incredibly important to us. Our teams work very hard across the Black Hills, maintaining our systems, inspecting our facilities and maintaining our vegetation to reduce wildfire risk. One of the things I wanted to call out today, this is the national level. And what this slide shows you is, it's, it's kind of noisy with, with the, with the lines and the graphs and the dots. But really what it shows you is from nineteen eighty-three, for the last forty years, what we've seen is a decline in the number of fires that occurred in the, in the United States. What we have seen is an increase in the number of acres that have been burned. And so we're seeing a more severe situation with fires as far as burning larger numbers of acres, even though we are, all of us are engaged in fire prevention efforts to reduce fires from happening. So I just kind of wanted to put that on the national front of kind of what we're seeing in the country. And then if you go to the next slide, we're going to jump to Lawrence County. So why does this matter? This information is publicly available on the wildfirerisk.org webpage. And you can pull up any county in the country. As we all know, anybody that's lived in the Black Hills for a period of time, you know, we love the Black Hills. They do have high fire risk though. And if you look at this map with regards to Lawrence County, when you compare Lawrence County to other counties in the country, eighty-one percent higher potential fire risk for Lawrence County than compared to other counties in the country. And so as we think about the fires, as, as we see what's, what's occurred across the U.S. and even into Canada, this is why we're, we're engaging and investing our efforts in reducing wildfire risk.
You said eighty-one percent higher risk locally than nationwide. And we could probably get to this, but why is that?
It has to do with a couple of different factors. Obviously, we have the fuel source and the, the fuel loads in the, in the Black Hills with the trees and the forest. Topography also plays into that. Another thing, you know, we have very good fire suppression efforts in the Black Hills. We have great firefighters and volunteer firefighters. But also it's, it's a little more difficult to fight a fire in the hills than, you know, in others on flatlands. And so those are the, some of the factors that play into how they assess risk for, for wildfire. Thanks for the question, though. Why don't we jump into the next slide?
Well, it doesn't make any sense.
Oh, so this is, so yeah, this is
It's all grassland and it's like, you have the higher fire risk than the stuff up forest or the stuff on the edge of the canyon. Looks like somebody just watched a bunch of red and orange colors on a page and didn't again, grassland around St. Orange is not going to burn the same as the stuff down by the canyon up this cream colored rim up here.
Yep. No, I, I agree. And I, and we've also done some very similar wildfire risk assessments, some risk modeling and some fire modeling scenarios with a consultant that does this. And what we've seen is, you know, we, we do see elevated fire risk in the areas on the eastern flank of the Black Hills. You know, I'm, I'm not going to debate the, the characteristics here. I guess I just wanted to point out that, you know, as I think we can all recognize that there are elevated fire concerns in the Black Hills and the propensity for fire starts is, is there. So the next slide is actually, yeah, so we're going to, we're going to watch a little video here. We pause it for a second, just to kind of tee up, kind of tee up the, the video here. This is a, something that we put together, really public facing. It's on our website. The other thing I wanted to call out is a lot of this information has gone live on our website. So we are blackhillsenergy.com/psps. Website has this public facing information. And as we roll out our program, there will be more maps and information out there for the public as well. So with that, if you tee up the video.
So you're going to shut the power off in the whole county? If you shut it off, it didn't just be one area to another?
No, we, so it's part of our system design. We have the ability to selection and, and differentiate areas that might be impacted versus those areas that might not be impacted. So we have switches and reclosing devices that we can utilize to isolate sections. If and when we ever have a public safety power shut off, it, don't think of it as whole Black Hills going dark. That's, we have the ability to section and reclose. One of the things we're doing, and I'll speak to that right now, is in addition to National Weather Service weather stations, we are installing our own weather equipment as well. So we will have real time information for weather across the Black Hills. That information will then be used to minimize or eliminate areas from consideration if a power shut off would be necessary. So ideally, the impact would be as minimal as we can make it in the event that the criteria is met. So let's talk a little bit about that. Again, a public safety power shut off is a selective and proactive measure. And, and I want to stress this, this is, this is a last resort scenario. This is not something that, when we spent a hundred and forty years keeping the lights on, this is not something that we approach lightly. You might ask, when are we going to do this? So we're not the first, you know, if, if you look across the United States, fifteen states or greater than fifteen states already have legislation regarding wildfire litigation and wild, and public safety power shut offs. Our industry uses two indicators for conditions that would exist that might require a power shut off. Those include wind gust speeds and low relative humidity. Now, the, you know, the industry as a whole, and, and what we have adopted for a criteria for gusts is forty-five, fifty-five mile an hour gusts accompanied with a low relative humidity. We do have generally relative low humidity in, in the Black Hills. But what I wanted to talk about though was the history. So over the last several years, we've been doing more in-depth weather monitoring. Every morning, our crews, before they go out in the field, we actually start with a weather forecast. So our crews are aware of, they have situational awareness of weather conditions, whether it's blizzards, whether it's high winds, hail, or wildfire. And we actually get a forecast specifically for our service territory. And as we look back, people, the, one of the questions that have we been asked, and we've been meeting with emergency responders and others, is how many times would this have occurred in the past? We want to know how significant this is. And so we, we look back six years. We have very good weather data back the last six years. And as we look back, meeting those criteria that we've established, we have seen years where we've had zero events across our entire territory, north to south. We've also had one year, we had one event and, and a year that we had two events. So the most extreme year, we had two shut off, two potential criteria that would met a shut off criteria in the last six years.
I mean, what was the average length of the shut off or duration of it, if you know?
Yep. So on those events that we reviewed over the last six years, the weather, the weather event lasted two to three hours on average. The most extreme one was seven hours.
Along those lines, do you have a policy where you would not have an outage last longer than say seven or eight hours before you would turn power back on for a period of time? And maybe that doesn't make sense and then go off again, or it would last as long as it needed to?
Yeah, so we are going to proactively de-energize those areas that meet that criteria until that, that weather condition is absolved, until it resolves itself. Ideally though, so we have, and I'll talk about that on the last slide here. As we, as we go through that process, we, let's say we get to a point where we de-energize power. Before we can re-energize the power, we have to inspect all of those lines that were shut off. And the reason is, is all of our electronic systems see our system in real time. And when we shut the power off, we lose visibility to our system. We're going to have scouts in the areas. We're going to have those types of things mobile. But we have to make sure that we patrol all lines prior to re-energizing.
I had the advantage of seeing an earlier presentation. And so I think what that means is you either have to physically inspect them, or maybe it's drones or whatever it is by combination of that. But every, the scope of it, every line in that sector that's affected has to be inspected in some fashion before power gets turned back on.
Correct, correct.
How large of an area were these shut offs?
I don't, that's, that's a great question, and, and I can follow up with you on that. I don't have the granularity of the area of impact of each of these events. That is something that we've asked for, and I can, if it, we, we can certainly circle back on that and, and, and give you what information that we have available now. Just to your point about patrols too, it's, you know, it's, it's foot patrols, it's aerial patrols. So we have contracts with helicopters and, and aircraft. So we have contracts with helicopters and aircraft to be able to fly. We fly our lines today. And so those would be things that we would do. And I would just tell you, if and when that occurs, it's going to be an all hands on deck. Everybody that's qualified to patrol and inspect, they're going to be patrolling and inspecting.
The shut offs would be selective areas. Is it fair that the areas can be quite modular and can be reduced down into their lowest affected area, if that makes sense, or is it always going to be, can we look at a map and say it's going to be zone A is off, B is off, or a combination of all of it up? Or can it be a smaller subset of that?
Yeah, so all of the above. It, it, the idea is, and I would tell you, from an investment perspective, we are investing more optionality into our system with more switches and reclosing devices as we go forward. The goal is, we want to get the areas down as small as we can. So why don't we just jump into the next slide and I'll kind of walk through what that looks like. So this kind of gives you a level of what it would look like if we had a power shut off situation. So, like I said, we monitor weather real time. Before I came up here this morning, I looked at the weather forecast for the Black Hills and it kind of had a lay of the land. We watch weather five days out. That's what we do right now. And, you know, anybody that knows weather forecast, five days is a little bit, can be a little bit questionable, but we're watching five days out to three days. In the case of a scenario where we might be meeting criteria, we are typically going to be in that monitoring period from five days out. Let's say we receive, and I don't want to go into too much detail because I want to kind of keep this into the time slot that we're at, but certainly will have some questions. Okay, okay. So we receive, you know, like I said, daily forecasts. If and when our criteria was going to be met, we would, we would receive a notification from our, our meteorologist that says, on day three or four, there's a potential for what we would call a level five day, which is a PSPS day. So we would be watching that. When we get to that seventy-two hour mark, if that weather condition is still persisting in that area, at that point, we are going to stand up our incident command structure. And being ready, we're going to start our notifications to offices, emergency management, and sheriffs and law enforcement. So that's seventy-two hours out of a potential event. While we're doing this, to the question about the areas, we're going to be continually monitoring on a twelve-hour period what those areas look like, the areas of potential concern. And we'll be, you know, as, as we've learned with other weather, usually what we get from the National Weather Service is, they give you a forecast for a broad area, and then as it gets closer to the event, that area gets smaller and smaller, and then you get kind of honed in on where it's going to be. That's the same thing we're going to do with this. So, so let's say we're in that watch or that monitoring period. We're at seventy-two hours. We've made our notifications to law enforcement and emergency managers saying, there's a potential. Be prepared. At that forty-eight hour mark, so let's say we jump ahead one more day. We're continually doing our monitoring and ICS structure. Every twelve-hour period, we have operational periods. At forty-eight hours, we say, yes, it's still a potential. That's when we will begin public notification to all customers. So, that would be, that would be media, that would be through our text messaging, that would be through our automatic calls. Our outage map on our website would be stood up with, with potential areas of information. And so then we're in that watch period and really, we are going to be in that watch period until four hours before we believe that event could occur. So four hours before a potential shut off is when we make the decision either go or no go. So when we kind of hit that four-hour period, you know, T minus four hours before the event, we will ultimately make a decision either to continue, cancel the event or extend it out because the, the weather has not materialized. So we hit zero. So we hit the, the time, we still determine that the event is necessary. We would de-energize power at T minus zero. And then it's really watching that weather continuously, waiting for that weather period to pass at this, you know, we're going to be staging crews. We're going to have people in the field. We're going to have, if needed be, depending on the area, we're going to be bringing crews in from outside to help us with the restoration efforts. We will then do our patrols when that weather has passed and then ultimately re-energize, once it's safe to do so.
Is this strictly just for wildfire, or could you possibly do this for a later blizzard event?
You know, in a general sense, this would be strictly for wildfire. From a winter weather standpoint, I mean, we have operational practices that today, we do the same thing. We, if we watch the weather two days out, three days out of blizzards coming, we're staging crews, we're getting ready. This is, this is one additional preparedness measure specifically focused on wildfire, but we have the same practices in place for, for blizzards. No, 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 we would not. No.
Maybe you've already mentioned this, or you're going to come to it, but I wanted to ask before I forgot, is there a date that this is proposed to be implemented? And or does it have to go through the Public Utilities Commission in any way for any kind of approval?
So it does not have to go through the Public Utilities Commission for any kind of approval. We are, I would say, you know, our, our goal is to have the, the plan and the framework in place by midsummer. Well, we're kind of here in midsummer. I would say we are, you know, in the, in the point where we're close to being ready to go forward with this. So, so that's, I mean, yeah, I mean, it, you know, the commission, basically, under the emergency provisions in state law, we have the ability to de-energize power if an emergency condition exists.
Reference text messaging. So if I'm a person, I'm an elderly person and I have a medical device, do I have to opt into those text messages? Or, or am I going to automatically get a call?
Great question. So there's two, there's two or three ways to go about that. The first way is if you're a Black Hills Energy customer and you have a cell phone number on your record, you're automatically enrolled into the text message notifications, and that includes all outages today and potential public safety power shut off messages. The other thing that I would say, if you have a customer that has medically sensitive concerns, we can, if they call in, they can note that in their account, and we can also place them in a, in a bucket so that we understand that there, there's a medical, you know, we can't get into a lot of the, the health things.
What can we do to help them?
It just, it's an awareness for us and it's information that potentially could be shared with emergency responders in the event of an outage.
I mean, you could possibly force people to come out of court to have a backup generator here just to satisfy their staying alive. I mean, I have, I have trouble with that.
Well, and I appreciate, I appreciate your comment. You know, I think the, the challenge that we've been faced with in some ways is, you know, our power has been so reliable, right? The lights do stay on all the time. I mean, for the most part, and that, you know, for me, I mean, I live in the hills. And I, we have to do, we all have to do what we can do to, to be prepared for, for events that occur. You know, we are working with local nonprofits and others to develop opportunities to see if we can support those affected groups during these outages, and we're working on some plans there.
Well, I just, I can see what if you see this step into this, they don't take responsibility. You want the power left on there to storm, burns down the forest, people sue the utility company?
Oh, I understand.
Yeah, it, it, it all kind of makes sense to me.
I mean, I'm trying to play frame this, and it could be, you could have a lightning strike, if power could go off for a period of time without any kind of advanced notice.
Just like this weekend. Yeah, yeah. A couple of, a couple of comments too. One thing I wanted to say, you know, one of the, the things that, that is referenced, the National Weather Service issues a, you know, red flag warning. That's something that comes out that everybody kind of hears about. What I want to make sure people understand is, if a red flag warning happens, that does not mean we're doing a PSPS. Those are two separate things. Our criteria is more severe than the National Weather Service criteria. So that's one thing that I wanted to point out. That's something that was a cause of confusion for folks that every time they see a, a red flag warning that we might be shutting off power, and that is not the case. Go ahead.
You mentioned law enforcement, so that's obvious. So how many would be concerned about our jail building? We have backup generators, so it should be covered. So even specifically up to them, and I'm sure you've reached out to the hospitals and so forth as well, and make sure that they're properly provisioned to accommodate whatever kind of an outage might occur.
Yep, yeah, we've had, we've had a couple of meetings with Monument and are working, actually on all fronts, we've been having meetings with tourism. We've been having meetings with a number of affected stakeholder groups on what we can do to, to keep the power on. You know, ultimately, our goal is going to be, and how we operate during an emergency scenario, we are going to be working to try to keep everything on as much as we can. Obviously, understanding that critical infrastructure and resources are, are dependent upon our power. We, a whole, whole other host of information that we're building is we've got a critical infrastructure map and, and critical customer map that we're working off of to help prioritize restoration efforts. So there's, there's a lot of efforts that are going, going on this, so.
So, so if you had a portable outlet, why it wouldn't be affected by your shutting the power off?
If you had a portable generator? It, if, if a homeowner had a portable generator, they could certainly mitigate an outage from happening. Yeah. So like if you had a standby generator at your house that was powered, powered by fuel or diesel or natural gas or propane, with a proper double throw transfer switch, you could certainly keep the power on at your house. Yes.
So I have to have an alternate transfer for power?
Uh, yeah, to ensure that that generator, if the generator is connected to your fuse panel, to ensure that that generator does not backfeed the grid with power. And there are devices, there are devices out there that plug into your, into your electric meter that allow you to connect the generator. They have that auto throw transfer switch built into them. They're, they're fairly affordable about the price of a generator, a good generator. So, there are options other than putting a standby generator in someone's house. Yes.
I think, as chairman, would you add the chairman of the board to the list of folks that gets notified, you know, if this is going to be effective, if that makes sense?
Sure.
Yeah, and if you want to add me as well, but.
John, do you know, so when we do our seventy-two hour, we're going to have, going to be emergency managers, it's going to be county sheriffs. Do you know, is it county commission?
So what we're trying, what we're currently working on, and we should get more permission out today, of course, is our first is emergency managers, you know, and identifying if they have a better way of communicating to all of you, you know, because every, every community might have a different way of communicating.
Yeah, I already did notice this from you, that is all the time that it started happening and so.
We, our, our main goal with that, that monitoring phase is, you're going to be hearing directly from the public affairs people. I mean, it's going to be, the customers that are going to be impacted will be getting notifications through kind of an automated system. Hey folks, you know, heads up, this might be coming your way. But individuals that are running, running communities, you're going to be hearing directly from me and my team. And so we're identifying the best way to do that, starting with our EMs and figuring out if it's easier to contact the EM and let them know what's happening, and then they have a better way of reaching out to you guys, or if you guys need to hear from us. And those are some of the things that we're currently working on right now, and we hope to have better clarity on. But certainly, we want to, we can add you to a list and just, and we can.
Well, the way I'm already being notified, I'm sure.
It'll be different. This will be different. This won't be an automated message from, from, you'll be, you'll be getting a call from my cell phone. That would be, that would be the communication level we'd want to be at, at that monitoring phase to let you guys running these communities know kind of what's happening.
So I think we've got your name, but can you repeat your name for us first?
John Kaiser, K A I S E R.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
One other, one other thing that's been brought up in meetings, and I wanted to kind of call it out based on that history. We talked a little bit about the history that we have occurred. One of the concerns was initially that these shut offs might occur at the hottest extreme period of the summer. And as we look back at those events, those events that we had over the last six years, those events typically occurred on the shoulder months, so either March, April, or August, September, October. And really what that, as we dove into that data, what we found is, that's when we have, you know, we have a fuel load that's dry, that has grown and dried and is, is available for, for ignition. And so one of the concerns was, are we going to shut off the power in the middle of August? And at least, we, we don't have any indicator of future performance, but what we do know from the past is the past events have occurred during those shoulder months. And so I just, I wanted to make sure that I call that out today. So.
I mean, I understand where you're at, why you're doing it. I'm not happy about it, but it's life, I guess.
I appreciate, I appreciate, appreciate the comments and appreciate the concern, and we'll, we'll keep communicating. This is, you know, this is part of the beginning and we'll keep moving forward. So. Thank you all. Appreciate for the time.
Thank you. You're gonna pick it up, Bruce?
I think John Frederickson is here. This is the time of crisis of our county. There's already.
Editioned.
Yeah, it's an expansion of property in Powderhouse Pass. As a figure of this, as required by statute, seventy-four five eight, forty-one, section seven, a map and other information that has been available in the auditor's office for the records at period of time, which is no less than twenty days. So that's been there. And I'll refer to John in a second, but I think the information that he's provided, it covers the considerations that US politicians are compelled to go through, you know, one second here, I may. And, and so if you would say that it's reasonably populated to answer those considerations as stated in statute, he has provided a proposed set of findings back conclusions along the post order. They are in graph form. And so ultimately today, if we decide after the public hearing to approve, it would be subject to a final draft being done and authorized to share in the time and the appropriate time and place. Again, I'm not trying to be presumptuous. But with that, I guess that, that background.
Thank you. Of course, my name is John Frederickson. I do represent Powderhouse Pass, not BH Development, but the area that we're talking about is up around the little President's Park across from what is now the gateway into Powderhouse Pass. They acquired the, some of the property last year, I believe it was, and they've decided that they want to include some of those or be included in Powderhouse Pass. There is another small section down to the southeast, which was leased from the Lee Deadwood Sanitary District for the last ten, fifteen years with an option to purchase. The sanitary district wanted to get rid of it, so they, they purchased it from them, and they then had subdivided that. There is lot W two, which is where the treatment plant is for the water that serves us, Powderhouse Pass. The balance of that, which is eleven point some acres, is then going to be, be developed into housing and stuff. The the Black Hills, well, both Black Hills properties and BH Development petitioner requested that this property be brought in. The county or the Board of Supervisors passed a resolution authorizing the filing of this petition. As Mr. Hook has pointed out, I believe that it reaches, it has fulfilled all the requirements of SDCL twenty-five A forty-one. And so I guess we would ask for your approval. If you have any questions, of course, I'm ready, able to answer. Before I go any further though, I would like to introduce Ken Wentz, Ken Wentz, who is the district manager now for Powderhouse Pass. So.
Bruce, John, I think I saw, and I don't know maybe if you said it, but there's two tracks or two lots involved here. One is a little over eleven acres and one is just a shy of an acre. Is that right? So right around twelve acres? Am I right on that?
Uh, from the sanitary district?
Yeah.
Yes, that would be correct. I did, I had.
Correct.
I pardon.
Three in total?
Three.
I've got three maps here.
Yeah, there's, there's a total, total of about forty-five acres.
Okay.
Yeah. The property purchased from the sanitary district was twelve point some acres.
Well, this is a public hearing, so we'll open up for the public hearing and allow anyone in the body of the room or online to participate for or against this proposal. And I would ask that you would please state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak to this? Anyone online? Anyone online? Not seeing anyone close to public hearing or offering to the board. It sounds like you've crossed all your keys and dotted all your eyes.
I think, and I think it's important, I, I do want to state that the property that was purchased across the highway to be added in here is going to require that there be services, infrastructure developed and constructed over there. That is going to be at the cost, the developer is going to pay for that, you know, because I know that had been a concern, but they, it's, it's, it's on the shoulders of the developer, not Powderhouse Pass.
Has he talked to John Bay, the superintendent of highways? He's started going across the road.
That's a state.
Well, not at this juncture. I'm just referring to the land is located across and there aren't any plans for this.
Any, any further questions or anything or discussion?
Mr. Outkast, have you reviewed the documents? Are you comfortable with them?
I am, yes. And so seven twenty five A dash forty four has the seven factors. So the motion, you would make a motion to approve it, define that they applied with with those seven factors. Yeah, reflected in the fines, impact, conclusions, law, and order. And then seven twenty five A dash forty five says that upon the conclusion of a hearing like this, if you determine that all those requirements I just referenced are satisfied, you may enter an order granting the expansion of the district setting forth the fines.
Okay. And I'll make a motion based on staff's examination of the documents, examination or review of the documents that we approve with the language Mr. Outkast used, the annexation.
To conclude, the chairman has then authorized to sign, wouldn't have to sign the fines if that would be able to sign and that's a false order.
Yeah.
We have a motion in a second, further discussion. And then I'll also favor the motion to say aye.
Thank you. And I'll get those to you today or tomorrow, Bruce. Okay. Thank you.
Well, I believe we have covered our agenda. We're down to items from the public. Do we have anyone in the, in the room or online from the public that would like to address the board at this time? Okay, seeing none? Is there any items from the commissioners that anyone wants to share with us?
Yeah, I, we sent this picture out to everybody, right? I just, I wanted to talk about that. So Mary is that the county should be concerned about. Probably the, the most concern would be on highway eighty five going to Balfour. There, that's really, really good land and the Balfour has control of water there for city purposes. And there's good quality land on both sides. I don't think it should be put in the city for any reason.
It's not, the, the line going up through already is in the city.
It's been annexed.
This thin, narrow line is already in the city.
Oh, I know that. So this isn't.
That's been taken over, hasn't it?
That new map is your guys'. That's your current map.
This is or isn't that current map?
It is your current map. That's what you guys adopted when you did the ETJ, when you signed that new ETJ back on March twenty fifth of twenty twenty five.
Well, that, that line just includes the highway and quarter of miles off to the south, but.
To the east.
To the east, yeah, I'm sorry. But the rest of the, the dog line includes the good agriculture land is probably some of the best in the state.
Always been under the, they shrunk down the boundary recently. This is the shrunk down boundary from where it was. It was three miles out. They've done a lot of work to bring this down. On the east side of that solid line, they're not allowing septic tanks because of the jet, which is not the best ground they're on. But and down below to the west is, yeah, there's a large area that includes the Balfour's water supply. That's no septic designated now. So it's a major improvement from where we were. We were way too large in the past. But that really whittled down. We've already approved this.
Well, I know we have, but I don't think we should have.
If I may, Richard, so I think there's two things going on here and Amber will correct me if I'm wrong. So statute totally, the city of Spearfish municipality has the right to go out three miles for their
Plating jurisdiction.
For, for plating, yeah, thank you. And so, and then there's, the second thing is, is that we have disagreed with the city of Spearfish for the ETJ area for things like what, building permits and floodplain and things like that. So there's two things going on. And so those areas used to not match up. And so now what's happened is, and what this map reflects is the boundary of those two areas now matches up and it's, it's shrunk in. So Spearfish is not trying to exercise its plating jurisdiction to the extent it used to. And they're also not doing those inspections like they used to either. So the areas have contracted as, as Mr. Tisdale reflected. And, and, but now they match. So it's a lot easier for the public to understand where they have to go to, to transact business. Does that make sense?
Well, kinda. But I, I don't agree that they, I think they should have squeezed it down more yet. I think they're still too wide for three miles. And, and that's what I'm pointing, that's what I'm pointing out that they are. And that, this is part of their doubles the size of Spearfish. And they got land inside it, inside there, the Magalhães, Somal land and the land next to it must be eighty or a hundred acres or more. And they shouldn't have to go out into these primary agriculture lands. And when you have a, a public can talk about those things, that's one of the things they bring up is the fact that agriculture land ought to be protected more.
I think what Chris was referencing is that you remember discussions during the last comp plan discussion, where he thinks that folks are saying that ag land should be preserved. And I think, and what works is, you would say that the current comp plan does not reflect, reflect that like that folks had indicated it should have. Does that make sense to everybody? I mean, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's right. That, that's probably one of the reasons I recommended having commissioners from certain areas around there that represent agriculture a little better than just have everybody talk about cities and, and that the way the city can do and that. A lot of these people work and control the land and the, and my opinion is Spearfish has gone way overboard on this. They don't need to gobble up that much land and that may, it might have been more, but it didn't last enough.
Good. You guys had messed it up years ago, Richard. It's better now. Amber's worked hard to make this all better and you just keep bringing it up and bringing it up. It doesn't help.
No, it doesn't. But I agree. Yeah, I still agree with what I say.
Well, that's okay. All right. Well, just, well, I do a pick, you know, I, I, I too have an ag advocate and have a little displeasure in some of the boundaries, but that eighty five is, that's kind of been done for a long time.
Yeah, but it was just a line.
I think they went a little too far west of town, but that's my personal opinion. So. But we did approve it. Anything else from the board?
Okay, seeing none, I will do a Dana Washington adjournment.
Do you have your?
Just sent the, Frank sent us the.